Welcome to the Thursday, September 11th, meeting of the Arlington School Committee. This is our first meeting of the school year. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted in person and through the use of Zoom. This meeting is being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI, and the meeting is being recorded. Because all members are anticipated to be present, votes will be taken by voice unless a roll call is required. Persons wishing to access the meeting using Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. The posted agenda and supporting materials for this meeting are also available on the town's website. Due to open-meeting law restrictions, the committee cannot participate in or access Zoom's chat function. While everyone is welcome to observe this meeting, active remote participation requires advance notice. All participants are asked to activate their camera and shall provide their full name in the interest of developing a record for the meeting. This evening, we have with us our representative from the Arlington Education Association, Ms. Keys; we have our Arlington High School student representative, Sophia DiStefanis; and then our regular cast of characters. We are going to start our meeting this evening with a moment of silence in remembrance of Arlington High School student Nina Carbine. She tragically lost her life while visiting family in Italy this summer. She is a member of the class of 2026 and was a beloved part of our school community. She was known by her teachers for her kindness, humor, and warmth. She built strong relationships with peers and staff, and her presence left a lasting impact on everyone who had the opportunity to know her. So we would like to take a moment to remember Nina. The first item on our agenda is public comment. We have two people here for public comment. The first one is via Zoom. Ms. Miller, you're up first.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, cool. My name is Cheryl Miller. I live at 10 Thurston Street. I am an autistic parent of two students with disabilities in Arlington. I would like to speak about the strategic plan. I had an IEP meeting for my son last week. In that meeting, the IEP team was clear that in order for my son to receive the help he needs, he would first have to go through another round of failure. I've heard this song before. It's why my other child has been forced out of district, because help was not offered when needed. It was only offered after so much harm was done that it was too late. Lack of timely support leads to more restrictive environments, not less restrictive environments. This is a big part of how students with disabilities are marginalized and excluded by school districts. However, the APS Strategic Plan and Mission and Vision statements say that APS recognizes this marginalization and commits APS to doing something different. Dr. Homan has promised me that those values apply to everyone and in every context, including special education. So I raised this during my son's IEP meeting last week. This is what I said. Can somebody here in power please address the district's strategic plan, mission statement, goals, all of that stuff, and how you square that with you saying, "Well, the kid has to go through failure after failure after failure before we help him." All your emails end with equitable educational community. All learners experience a sense of belonging, growth, and joy. Where is that going to be when my son is failing, when he's crying every morning, when our family is in a huge amount of stress? Where are those values? That's what I said in the meeting, and no one could answer. In year three of a five-year strategic plan, which has been adopted as school committee policy, with students on IEP specifically identified as a focal group whose school experience you want to improve, and with the IEP process being the roadmap for how a disabled student's school experience will be supported by a school district, even with all that, no one could answer. Halfway through this strategic plan period, APS Special Education still can't answer the most basic questions about how its approach to special education interacts with the district's goals and values. I have begged Dr. Homan to do something about this, to no effect. When will a school committee finally hold her accountable?
The next person we have is Yaxin Zheng, who is from Arlington High School. Yes, anywhere there is perfect. And if you can give us your name and address for the record, we would be grateful for that. And we did receive your slides, so you can refer to them.
Yeah. Okay. So my name is Yaxin Zheng. I'm a senior at Arlington High School, and my place of residence is, I think I included already, 7 Victoria Road, Arlington, Massachusetts. Good evening, Chair Morgan, Vice Chair Gilson, and members of the Arlington School Committee. I ask you, when's the last time you made a financial decision? Buying a coffee in the morning, perhaps? Investing in Walmart? Paying a mortgage? Every day you and I make financial decisions because it's an essential part of existing in society, just as natural as eating, drinking, or sleeping. And yet, 57% of Americans are financially illiterate. Massachusetts has received a grade of F for financial literacy in 2017, 2023, and is on track to receive yet another F in 2028. The state's own Office of Economic Empowerment calls school efforts fragmented and inconsistent. Ten years later, a measly 17% of 194 districts require financial literacy to graduate. Arlington High School is part of that neglecting majority, and this embedded systemic neglect has real consequences. I've already introduced myself as a student. However, I'd also like to introduce myself as founder of Project 57, a youth-led Massachusetts-based financial literacy nonprofit. In May 2025, I surveyed over 300 of my classmates. The results are as follows. 97% of respondents rated financial education as important, yet 70% reported having near zero confidence in their ability to make basic financial decisions. Meanwhile, 74% of students have never received any form of financial education, while those that did receive it through piecemeal efforts such as clubs, internships, or embedded units. When tested against national standards, the average score on AHS was just 4.78 out of 12. A score of seven indicates basic financial literacy, meaning 80% of AHS students fall short of national standards. And this deficiency isn't just for the next four. Studies prove that costs could be lifelong. Those of a low level of financial literacy are four times as likely to have difficulty making ends than those without, three times as likely to be debt constrained, and additionally, three times as likely to spend a minimum of 10 hours a week worrying about issues related to personal finances. This issue is further magnifying among vulnerable communities such as mine. As the eldest daughter of immigrant parents, I'm uniquely aware of the potential for individuals like myself to fall into cycles of poverty simply because we're not prepared. So what do we do? I ask the committee for three concrete steps. First, recognize financial literacy as a district priority. Financial learning builds financial resilience. Financial resilience is the first bolster for a child as they step into the world, and among the most crippling setbacks if they are not adequately prepared. Second, apply for the Massachusetts Financial Education Innovation Fund and host Arlington's inaugural Credit for Life Fair. And finally, add a standalone personal finance course requirement for the class of 2030 and beyond, the single most effective intervention for financial literacy in youth. Thank you for your time and for considering these steps, and I welcome collaboration to make financial literacy a reality for every Arlington student.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is hearing from our Arlington High School student representative. Welcome.
Hi. Okay. So the school year has just begun, so we don't have too many updates. But we did have a back-to-school block party on the first day of school on the front lawn, and it was a big success. I heard from lots of people that they had a blast, and we had free dowels for students, so I said that's pretty great. And we're planning a counselor appreciation breakfast because they've been really busy with all the schedule changes recently, and our pep rally planning is underway, as well as proms and dances, and then our freshman elections are set to be soon.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions?
When's the first pep rally?
I think it is the 9th of October.
I'll watch for it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. The next item is discussion and possible vote around a job description. This is a part-time administrative assistant for central office. This is coming today because this was a need, and Dr. Homan can speak to it, that was identified over the summer. We typically look at our job descriptions in subcommittee. This didn't have a very obvious place to go, and we felt like it could come here directly, unless people have concerns, which obviously you can raise during any discussion. But, Dr. Homan, you want to give us a brief description? And my understanding is that this was also shared, like, we did all of our steps around the job description, which is good.
Yep. Yes. So we have taken a look at this. At AA, we have just taken a look at this. Our goal here is to have, so we have a number of positions we have not filled this year in central office. If they've gone vacant or they were in the 2026 budget, we just held on filling them, including a position in HR, a position in the business office that were new adds, and a couple of positions that have gone vacant that we haven't backfilled. So we're now with, we've had two folks doing registrar and enrollment and outreach as well in central office for the past, like, four years. We added that when, in 2021, I believe, and we haven't backfilled the vacancy that emerged there, so we only have one. And so we're really hoping this role can just fill in some gaps for us operationally across departments in central office. When there are specific projects that are needed, there are heavy times for certain tasks that can sort of be allocated as specific projects, like running quarries is sort of heavy for one period of the year. There are mailings that go out that are heavy for another period of the year. So our hope is that a part-time role where we have a little more flexibility around hours will be able to help us fill in any of those gaps so that nothing slows down and that folks out in schools don't experience any hiccups along the way.
Great, thank you. Questions? Discussions? Dr. Allison Ampe?
I was a little confused by the role being part-time, but it's listed as over 15 to up to 35 hours a week.
So it'd be 15 is the minimum. We need to have it at 15 in order for it to be a Unit C position, and this is posted as a Unit C position. We're imagining it'll be around 15, 20. It could flex up. Like, if we have a very busy period, they could have a full-time week, which would be the 35-hour week. We don't anticipate that necessarily, but we wanted to give ourselves the flexibility and ability to find somebody who could sort of tell us what would work for them in that range.
Okay. And there aren't problems with it being a part-time position and going to 35 hours for a certain amount with the Unit C contract?
We have a held position that is not listed in the transfers for today, that is an unfilled position, and we would use the salary from that to offset this. So, no, it's not financially problematic.
Right. But my question was, I don't remember how a Unit C contract is set up. What has to be a full-time position? And, you know, what I'm saying is, I don't, is it okay to have something that's 35 hours? I mean, is there, like, a limit to how long you can have it, 35 hours a week?
I'm going to ask my friends and colleagues here.
So it couldn't be regularly, I mean, then we, really, the threshold is if it's under 18.75, you're not eligible for health insurance and other benefits. So in that sort of 15 to 18 range is a real part-time position that, you know, we don't, we have a lot of regular, not a lot, we have a few part-time, regular positions that have a regular part-time schedule every week. This would might be a little different because it might, it could flex. But I think as long as we're not going regularly, you know, 35 hours a week for months on end, if it's just, you know, a week here or there, it should be okay.
Okay. That's all. Anybody else? Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the part-time administrative assistant central office job description.
So move.
Second, motion by Mr. Thielman, second by Ms. Exton, all in favor. Yes. Opposed. Abstentions. Great. That's a 7-0 vote. The next item on our agenda is discussion and possible vote to recommend the reappointment of Stuart Akata to the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. Ms. Gilson, in her role as the chair of the Community Relations Subcommittee, has shepherded this process through, so I'm going to turn this over to her.
Thank you. The Community Relations Subcommittee met last week, I think it was, and voted to recommend Stuart Akata for reappointment to the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. We did give him the option of coming here. He said he didn't feel the need to take up any more of our time. So I'll just say that since 2018, including two terms as co-chair, Stuart has worked hard to build connections between the schools and the arts community. He's helped fund school-related arts projects, created internships, and paid opportunities for students, opened up exhibition opportunities, and even established a student voting seat on the commission. Through this work, Stuart has made sure APS students and teachers are not just participants in town in art activities, but truly valued voices and contributors. And his reappointment would continue to strengthen those ties and open doors for our students. So, I don't know, do I make the motion?
You can do, yeah.
So I move to reappoint Stuart Akata as a school committee appointment to the Arts Commission, Arlington Commission on Arts and Culture.
Any discussion? Mr. Thielman? I mean, Mr. Schlickman?
When does the term expire?
It's been expired early September.
It's September, I don't know what date in September, but I believe we were coming up to the last second on this.
Okay. Just for the purposes of saying that this is for a term to expire, September 30th, three years out, I think, is the appointment's due. Is it a three-year appointment?
I'm looking right now. I think we, at one point, did know the time.
Yes, because he reached out to us.
So this is the end of his second term. He started in 2018. Does it seem like it would be?
Good question. We used to have a list of one of these. I did ask when the appointment expired.
So I have in the email thread that it was August 2022 when Mr. Hayner asked him if he wanted to re-up for three years, it sounded like.
These are all traditionally three-year terms throughout the biolog.
So this would be September 2025 through September 2028.
Okay. So this is due for, expires September 30th, 2028. Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion by Ms. Gilson, seconded by Mr. Schlickman, to reappoint Stuart Akata to the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture, all in favor. Yes. All opposed. All abstentions. That's a 7-0 vote. Thank you, Ms. Gilson. Next is the FY26 recalibration trade changes and transfers. There are three documents in Novus, so this is, and Mr. Gorski's going to work us through this. So these are changes that have been made to the budget that we approved in March. And so typically, the administration comes back to tell us the changes they made to the money that we allocated. So we're excited. Mr. Gorski, for you to tell us how you spent our money.
Thank you, Chair. Just a clarification, these are changes that will be made after the school committee approves them. So we haven't made these changes yet. I'm going to start with the detail sheet here, which is up on the screen. This is showing the status, the description, the location, the amount, the account number, and the budget category. We have eight positions that are not going to be filled, and then there are stipends and an unassigned salary line that have shown no activity the past couple of years. So we have an administrative assistant at the high school, a building sub at the high school, a teaching assistant at Odison, a certified nursing assistant, which is district-wide, an SEL coach, which is district-wide, and then we have our central office positions, the Director of Research, Data, and Accountability, the new HR position that was in the FY26 budget, and we had an admin position that was going to transition into a business office specialist position in the business office that we're not going to fill. So as we come down to the bottom of that list, and as I mentioned, there's, there is about a dozen stipend lines that have shown no activity that have been budgeted in previous budgets, we have a total of $630,561 that we are proposing be moved to, from the salary budget to the operational side of the budget to address the shortfall in transportation, specifically split about evenly between industry transportation and out-of-district transportation. As you can see, the numbers do $315,000, $315,561. And the second sheet, which is, I think, what the vote will be for school committee, is our budget transfer category. So this is showing what the approved budget was in FY26, the FY26 budget, back in March or April, I forget the exact timeframe. By category, admin, curriculum, elementary, other, secondary, and sped. We have some carryforward transfers, which you're going to see that activity in the second column, showing the revised budget number. And then the transfer request by category, so this is referring back to the detail page. The reason why that number, the 591, varies from the $630,000 is because we have some sped items in the detail, so they don't need to transfer between categories. But the bottom line is that we are moving money out of $277,557 out of admin, $197,902 out of curriculum, $15,715 out of elementary, $11,900 out of other, and $88,000 out of secondary into special education, totaling the $591,074. With that, I open up if the superintendent would like to add anything to that, or if there are any questions by the committee.
I don't think I have anything to add besides that this is following a pretty deep analysis of the transportation lines and to make sure that those dollars weren't allocated somewhere else and we had missed it. We're very confident that we hadn't and that this is going to help make sure that we end the year in the black. And we were able to identify that it was sometime between FY23 and FY24 that something was adjusted in the budgeting for special education transportation that resulted in some shortfalls over the last several years, but that those costs have been, like, going up at a fairly steady rate, requiring this level of funding in the FY26 budget. And so if we don't correct for that, we'll find ourselves in another situation where we're needing to correct for it at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, great. So this wasn't what, so what I was expecting, which is fine, we just didn't get this till recently, I was expecting to get also a list of positions that were hired for this year that don't line up with what was in the budget that we approved. So like, maybe we approved, like, a social worker and an SLP and a this, and then you ended up deciding that you actually hired a part-time social worker and a full-time SLP or whatever it is. So often, so that would be nice to get at some point, like, this fall, like, a reconciliation between what we, what positions were in the budget that we approved and then what you ultimately ended up hiring. I, but we need to do these budget transfers too, which is good. So questions from the committee around the transfers? Dr. Allison Ampe?
Hi. So I'm looking at what I hope is a recent copy of the FY26 proposed budget, and I'm seeing, like, $868,000 for in-district special ed. And so this is on top of that?
I would want to take a look at what you're looking at. But we were, when we did the analysis based upon what we budgeted up against the actual 25 expenditures, there was a shortfall of about $300,000 in both lines.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm wondering what we're actually spending and then, because I'm trying to also look at how has it changed over time.
If I could put a report together that shows some of that detail over time for a budget subcommittee meeting, if we want to do that.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, we've got some of the lines, I think, in the book. It's just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm doing the correct addition. But, so mainly what I'd like to see is what it actually will be this year, and assuming the other numbers are correct. If the other numbers that are in here weren't correct, then I'd like to know what those were too. Just because, you know, if we're planning for next year, if we're doing this for transportation, then we need to know. And then the other question is, how much of this will be reimbursable with Circuit Breaker?
Well, that's always a difficult question to get to because it's going to be based upon what the state actually has available. So as the committee is well aware, as part of the Student Opportunity Act, the state allowed transportation to be included in Circuit Breaker, but it's also the last item that's funded. So if there's available money in the state budget, you know, transportation will be reimbursed, but it's not always a guarantee. I could certainly take a look at what the rates were last year and see if I can pull something together.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Carden?
Thank you. It is helpful to get at least some of the information about positions that aren't being filled. So thank you for doing this at the beginning of the year. The, the business office specialist, we did eliminate a position, and we're going to move those responsibilities into this position along with some others. So how are all these responsibilities getting handled without hiring someone?
So some of why we were asking for the additional support was to move some projects off of folks who are sort of continuing to do functions that we were otherwise going to have this individual do. We, the goal of the business office specialist specifically was actually to speed up some of our processing times around requisitions and POs. And so we're operating, I would say, as we were prior. Would you agree? You're the one in the business office.
I would agree. The only thing that I would add is that, you know, and I'm going to talk about it from my perspective, what I was trying to address was what I deem to be an area that we should address, which is on the contract side. The town, both the town and the district's a little light when it comes to purchasing support, but I do think that we can probably absorb those duties within current staffing in the business office.
One of the things that slows us down is the fact that we have to have contracts reviewed by council if they're significant contracts and they're not following sort of a set format, sending things. I mean, I understand why it can take a while to get some of that back from town council because they have a lot that they're reviewing any given day. So if we had some procurement, and it's also knowing some of the procurement law and being able to navigate that with someone if they don't give us three quotes, for example, they've then got to go back. So one of the hang-ups that causes a delay is that one. And so if we had additional procurement support, that would have addressed it. And so that was one of the ideas for the business specialist role specifically. HR, we were moving a lot of functions out of the superintendent's office into the HR office. At the moment, they just don't really have anywhere to go, and so we're hoping that additional position's going to backfill some of those core functions.
And the AHS administrative assistant, where is that coming from? And the AHS administrative assistant, where is that coming from?
Can you tell me this? It was one of the ones that was there but not filled and we're not sure.
It was a recent vacancy that we talked about. I thought, yeah, it's a newer vacancy in the high school.
Guidance, front office, do you know where?
It's one of the, it's not, we filled, someone just moved into the position in the school counseling office and that freed up. It's not the front office, there's another person who focuses on attendance and records and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the.
Okay. And then just the last question, the, the in-district transportation, is that contracted services or is this the cost of our own staff and bus gas?
It's a mix, but there certainly are contracted services, you know, for priority transportation.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? So I am looking for a motion to transfer 277,557 from administration to special education, $197,902 from curriculum to special education, $15,715 from elementary to special education, $11,900 from other to special education, and $88,000 from secondary to special education. Did I get that right, Mr. Gorski?
You did.
I watched you check my work and I'm very grateful for your attention to that.
You did a great job.
So I am looking for that motion. Mr. Thielman?
So moved.
Brilliant. Do we have a second? A motion by Mr. Thielman, a second by Dr. Allison Ampe. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Yes? No? No, all opposed? And any abstentions? Seeing none, that is a seven-nothing vote. Next, Mr. Gorski is going to walk us through the FY26 APS rental fees that need our approval. For the record, we have not approved these since FY24. We just didn't do an interim approval, so these are new. And my understanding is, should we choose to approve them tonight, will be effective immediately. Is that the intention, Mr. Gorski?
That's correct, yes.
Great, okay. I believe that these are in our packet. Do you want to just note anything that might be new for us and then we can ask questions about them?
Sure.
If we have them? We're fairly familiar with this fee schedule.
Yeah, just a couple of notes for the committee. Obviously, the top part of this sheet includes preschool rates and transportation fees. Those are not affected by the changes that we're asking the committee to vote on this evening, but I would say that those probably should be considered mid-year for next school year if the committee decides to make any changes to those rates. Basically, what we've done for spaces that have fees attached to them, and again, the 25 column is based upon, as the chair mentioned, January 2024 vote, we've added 6% to those fees, basically a 3%, 3% to reflect increases, increasing cost of labor, utilities, supplies, et cetera. We've also addressed a couple of areas that were listed on this sheet that were TBD, that were not open at the time of the last vote, and that includes the gym and the cafeteria, based upon the auditorium rate. And the onsite APS supervisor, that was adjusted based upon the actual hourly rate of the person who's in that position. As we scroll down, the custodial rates were also adjusted for actual average hourly rates, custodials, the custodial fee for the cost of custodians providing that additional time related to facilities rentals. Superintendent, do you want to add anything to?
Only that I spoke with the facilities director today about doing some analysis to calibrate this according to the best estimate we can make on actual cost and that one of the note, I think, down here for custodial rate is an important one, that the actual rate will be in accordance with the custodial contract, including increases for Sundays, holidays, and overtime rates, which we're required to pay under their contract. And so we will, this one is an adjustable rate based on when the rental is happening and whether it's requiring a detail that requires us to pay an overtime rate. And we'll be managing that through the business office. We previously managed it through the payroll office. So we also included the standard operating procedure that we, it's still being tweaked. We drafted it not too long ago, but that we're following now for building rentals internally so that you can sort of see how this will, this is now operating because we have moved some things around about how we're actually processing building rentals in the business office now.
Mr. Schlickman?
Thank you. I noticed that we're going for three-hour rates here. So let's say I wanted to have four hours, would this be prorated then?
That's typically what we do, we prorate by the hour.
Okay, so we.
These are minimum, these are essentially minimum rental rates.
Oh, these are minimums, okay.
Yeah.
And then if I wanted an extra hour, it'd be like a third of that number.
Correct.
Okay.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So I'm confused, when do you need a custodian? I mean, to pay the custodian rate? Is it with everything or is it? It's a little confusing because it says the rental rates automatically include and cover the cost of custodial detail, but then there's custodial rate per hour.
That would be if really all that was needed was the custodial detail, but there's, I cannot think of a rental instance that does not require the custodial detail.
But.
That's if it's just the detail, correct?
Right.
So I'm just confused about how, so let's say I wanted to rent the Gibbs Cafeteria. Do I also need to figure into that I've got a custodian? I mean, do I have to add in the custodial rate for three hours too?
The rates on these sheets are just for rental of the space. So the way we're charging, this is based upon the cost related to, you know, utilities, et cetera, and then there's additional custodial fees, correct?
I think the language in the top box is confusing.
Yeah.
Because I, because it says, so what we would do is we would give them their rate and it would include the room. So we would take these pieces and put them together into what they would get.
Yeah.
But I think you're right, that this makes it seem like the room rate covers the detail. So we should specify that before we post it.
Yeah, I didn't have to update the language, but we certainly can before this is posted.
Yeah, that should be more clear. And then the other thing is, so it talks about that it includes time for custodial setup and breakdown, but if I'm renting for three hours, let's say I'm throwing a party, is that setup, do I have to account for the setup and breakdown in my three hours or is that outside? And if it's outside, then what's the custodial, actual hours for the custodian?
So this one is a little bit, I think it varies because sometimes renters will only need two hours and that's kind of a straightforward, you know, there's a half an hour setup, half an hour. This is typically, we've run across it on a couple of occasions where folks were using the auditorium or the cafeteria and essentially they were billed an additional half an hour, an hour, you know, for the setup part of it and on the backend. So there was additional time, an additional hour or two that, you know, depending on the size of the group and what needed to happen with the setup and the cleanup post the event.
Okay, so as long as people are being told about that beforehand when you're signing up, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
But I think the language could be more clear.
Sure.
About that. And then finally, just looking at this, so I think we should approve this, right? But when we look at this again, because I think we've all hit a point, to me, it doesn't make sense that AHS spaces are charged the same rate as the elementary schools because we've got much more money invested in here. Our potential for risk and liability is greater just because this is the newer space and to bring it back up to what it is is more worrisome. So I'm just, and also I think these, I think a lot of these rooms are bigger too. So that's just a comment. I don't think, I'm not going to try and catch that out here now, but that's, if you want to comment something else.
Great, anybody else? Mr. Schlickman?
I would just sort of enter the debate the other side regarding classrooms in that there's a lot more stuff that lives in an elementary classroom than a high school classroom. So that I think there's a reason for having a different rate, maybe more expensive for the elementary schools to give preference to people, say, going to Gibbs, Odison, rather than going to one of the K5 buildings. That's, again, that's for the future. We can sum it off to facilities committees or policies or wherever for next year's. I don't see that as something to hang us up like that.
Thank you. Anybody else? So from me, so Mr. Gorski, if I was going to rent Pierce Field, is that under outdoor space, the $130.38?
There is actually a separate sheet for Pierce Field, which I was, I was going to reference tonight that can be, there's already rentals that are taking place or have been set up for the fall to make the suggestion that that be brought in as a separate rental. So this is, this is outdoor space.
Did we miss the second sheet? Did we miss the second sheet?
No, it's, there's a separate rental sheet for Pierce. The short answer is yes, this is related to the outdoor, outdoor space, including the field at Pierce. The longer answer is more, there's a more detailed rental sheet related to the custodial fees, et cetera, for Pierce, which is separate from the sheet for school committee to assess and approve. But we already have renters who have rented for the fall. The suggestion I was going to make was that we, that along with the preschool rates and the buses, that that be something that school committee address in January for the spring rentals, to take a look at those rates separately.
Okay, so I don't, I think we probably, I don't know if we've ever approved this separate Pierce Field rental sheet, so we should probably approve that in two weeks, given that it's what's being used. And I don't think it has had school committee eyes on it in the past. And we had a lot of questions from the community around some of the additional fees associated with Pierce. I didn't know those were written in the sheet, but that's great that there is one that I think it would be good for us to take a look at and approve, given I don't know that we have in the past, so. And then it should be all put together in one, like rental rate document so that we don't have extraneous rates out there that we can't be like, oh, yeah, yeah, we approved those on September 11th, this is what it looked like. So maybe we can circle back to that sooner rather than later, just to get it all kind of up to date with what the action is. And then, you know, if there are going to be edits to it, look at it again, maybe in January in preparation for the spring. And then, so my question around the, just, I know that we're not, we don't approve the approval procedure for facilities rentals, but, so if I read this correctly, the principals or assistant principals don't have discretion, they only have discretion around it being a scheduling conflict. It's not a sort of, oh, we don't want to rent this space situation. Okay, so if a renter, so I do hear complaints from the community around the inability to rent spaces, which is always, you know, hard to sort of parse out what exactly happened. But it's reasonable from reading this to say that the only reason that a requested rental would be denied would be that there was a conflict around the space and that it's reasonable for that community member to ask what the conflict around the space is. Like if I, if they're like, oh, you can't rent the AHS cafeteria, it would be reason, there's going to be an event either that's either happening or the AHS cafeteria or is moving through it. I mean, maybe if they're having a parade from the back to the front, you know, I don't know, right?
There should be a reason why.
There should be a reason why the, the request is being denied. So we're not, there's not a capacity from the administrators to sort of gatekeep these spaces for reasons other than a straight-up scheduling conflict is our understanding. Okay, good. All right, that's helpful to know.
Should we need to audit that? That's something we could easily monitor if we needed to.
Good, great. Mr. Schlickman?
We do have a policy. We do need to revise the policy because it's an old policy. We have a couple of samples from other districts for their policies, which we will look at at the next policy meeting. But to answer the basis of the question is, the district cannot discriminate on a potential renter based on who they are. So that because we're a public facility, if we open it up, we have to be opening it up to any, anybody within our categories. And we can categorize to give priority to our own organization, school-based organizations. So it has to be put on policy and plan and ensure that you're able to choose or rewrite the values we don't like.
Right, great, good. Yes.
I was just going to say, I'm like the queen of never use absolutes. Like, you can't rent my classroom at 4:00 in the morning. Like, there may be other reasons than just, there's a scheduling conflict, but like Mr. Schlickman was saying, like, it can't be a discriminatory because of what your group is reason.
Equinoxes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Right, or just that we don't feel like it.
Right, right, yes.
Yep, yep, okay, great. Anybody else? Great, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented with an administrative edit around, like clarifying language around the thing that Dr. Allison Ampe talked about. So, yeah, so if we can get a motion for that, it would be great. Mr. Thielman?
Move to approve.
Dr. Allison Ampe? You seconding Mr. Thielman's excellent motion? Fantastic, good. All right, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say yes or aye. Yes, no's, abstentions, great. Okay, the next item is the capital plan. Dr. Holman?
Okay, so this, the capital committee has gotten their work going earlier this year, and so we have for you everything that has been, first of all, the FY26 capital plan for the town, and it is the full plan for the whole town, so you can sort of see everything that's on there. And also, all of the requests for FY27 through FY31, and those will go into a lot of discussion and we'll be meeting with the capital committee over the next several weeks and months while they work towards a budget to present to the finance committee and town meeting. Some of the things that I'll just note have been high priority for us in making requests over the past couple of years and still this year are continuing some of the commitments we have to maintaining the facilities when it comes to being able to replace boilers and elevators and other sort of critical infrastructure at the schools, making sure that we are making good on commitments to increasing sustainability throughout the district and in our schools, making sure also that we have all of the technology that we need. We did a lot of AV refreshing, classroom audiovisual systems refreshing over the summer with the support of RIT team. We had to have some vendors out also to rewire some classrooms in order to put in some voice amplification systems at several of our schools, which we're really, really excited to have. That has been a really top-line priority that we have developed a lot of justification for and talked with the capital committee about a lot. and talked with the Capitol Committee about a lot because it's very tied to our ability to provide accessible instruction in all of our classrooms. So that's been top-line, as well as devices for the students, refresh devices for teachers because a number of the devices that we bought during the pandemic are starting to age out and need replaced. It is a squeeze. All of these things cost more now than they used to. And the dollars aren't going nearly as far as we need them to. So you'll notice gaps between what's been requested and what is able to be funded. And we're highlighting some of those as well in the Technology and Space Plan that the Facility Subcommittee looked at earlier today. So a lot more detail will be in that plan, which we'll look at over the next month or so. We're happy to answer any questions to the best of our ability. We've worked directly with the Facilities Director and the Chief Information Officer for the town to develop these requests and to rank-order them so that the Capitol Committee can have those details when they consider them amongst all the other requests and important projects in town.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments, discussion on the capital plan? Ms. Keys?
I never get to go first. Some accessibility upgrades at Hardy were a huge staff priority. Is that rolled into one of these other categories? Because I don't see it as a line item.
Hold on. I don't think those are explicitly named here. Was the, was the ramp for the playground included, do you remember? Because that was one of the ones that they're concerned about, was the ramp to the kindergarten playground.
The ramp to the playground, some like stair chair things for when the elevators are down and we have to.
We ordered some of those already.
Yeah.
And that we didn't need to do through Capitol.
Okay.
But I don't think that the, the, there's a ramp
To a, right.
to a playground and because there is accessibility, it's, it's not convenient in any way. But I don't think that that has made it into the Capitol request for this year. It is in the Tech and Space Plan to take a look at some of the trends in the audit that was done in 2019 for ADA compliance, which is one of the things that I know that team has seen, to consider what the trends were in that report and then go do a review because a lot of the recommendations in that report were not, they don't really line up financially with today's reality. And then some of the other things we took care of already, so we want to go back and look at that again.
And that SLC program wasn't at Hardy in 2019.
Correct, right. And I also think that they looked at the location of the programming in the school. But I'm not sure if they moved them or not, so I'll look into that with Principal.
Uh, Dr. Allison Ampe?
Just wondering, it mentions a school elevator upgrade. Which school do we know?
Thompson is top-line right now.
Okay.
And we need a supplemental to come through from the state in order to be able to move on that project.
Okay.
Anybody else? Great, thank you for bringing this to us. My understanding is you do not need School Committee approval on the capital plan, but it is fantastic that we are seeing it before it goes to the Capitol Committee. That's outstanding. So it's nice for us to have a chance. And if anybody finds they have further, when is this being sent over? Soon?
It goes into their platform in order for us to even be able to generate this report. And then they're starting to meet now. Actually, Jay McNeil, the new Facilities Director, is acting as the school's representative at the moment, and I'll be meeting with him regularly because we don't, we won't have somebody for a short period of time while Mr. Gorski is leaving and we're working on pulling somebody else in. But they'll start meeting soon and I'll be at any meetings that pertain to school-based requests.
Great, so if anybody has any further feedback as they dig into this more, they can address it to you.
They can bring it to me.
Great, okay. Super, uh, Superintendent's update?
All right. Good evening, School Committee members and community members at home. I have several updates, so this might take a few moments. First of all, it's wonderful to be back in school and to see students and to see teachers. And we had a fantastic opening of the school year. Everything went very smoothly. And it was wonderful to see everybody back, learning and enjoying getting everything set up and then saying hello to students. Our theme for 2025, 2026 school year with staff and in our professional development planning is to focus on deeper learning and inclusive classrooms. We really want to be clear about what we mean when we talk about deeper learning at the classroom level. And so that's our goal for this year and something that we're really deeply focused on. So for Opening Day 2025 with our educators, we had a student panel. We brought some fifth grade students in to talk about their experiences and what makes learning really compelling for them, what makes it stick, what they're really great at, and how they learned how to do those things. They shared some awesome stories with us and talked a lot about how relationships make a huge difference in learning and how encouragement from peers makes a big difference in learning. It was wonderful to hear their voices, talk about what makes learning compelling and what makes it deeper learning. Our cheerleaders literally cheered in the new school year with us. And they, they cheered staff into the auditorium and then they joined us in the gym where SR, our SRO, Officer White and Sergeant Scott Erkhart led an all-staff training in, in our new gym on our new standard response protocols. It's the only space we had where we could fit literally everyone, including all operational staff, all roles. We asked everybody to be present in the gym so that we could roll these standard response protocols out. I'll talk about those more here in a moment. That's Officer White at the bottom with Officer Roger and our students on the panel in the upper right-hand corner. We do have back-to-school nights going on. It was a lot of fun to visit Bishop and Pierce last night and Thompson on the first day of school. The teachers were very well-prepared, sharing with families everything that they are looking forward to with their students this year. On Monday, the 15th, we'll have Hardy and Stratton back-to-school nights. The 16th will be Gibbs. Wednesday is, can't possibly be the 15th because that's what Monday is. So that must be the 17th and then the 18th at AHS. Is that right? My dates on the slide are wrong. All of next week, there are back-to-school nights. They are posted correctly on the website, but not on my slide. So I will correct that and give it to Ms. Dickens to upload. And then on Tuesday, the 30th, will be Dallin and Brackett. I have several regulatory updates, which are things that we're going to have to work on as a committee and that it's good for the community to know about as well. There are new regulations related to access to career and technical education programming. And the, there's a policy that needs to be aligned with those regulations that is due by November 1st. This policy and the regulation associated with it requires us to develop something that will talk about the process for application admission to, in our case, Minuteman, a plan for strategies to promote equitable educational opportunities that will attract, enroll, and retain students, and a description of an exploratory program if that is required, as well as a process to appeal any denial of admission. We don't deny admission to students who want to go to Minuteman, but we need to have an appeal process in the event we should need to or feel the need to. So I'll be meeting with the Minuteman Superintendent on September 29th. I'll schedule a time for Policy Subcommittee to meet with Mr. Schlickman. There is also a requirement that we develop competency determination School Committee policy. We need to finish that by December 31st. That CD policy has to include an appeals process. If somebody wanted to appeal the CD, that's something that we would do through DESI prior, and now we need to internalize that. So we need a, a, a policy that will articulate that process. It needs to be approved by the School Committee, posted on the district website. Our current, what we, what we did for this past year will work according to the competency determination requirements, just in terms of a local graduation requirement and CD requirements. We just need to make sure that we have the appeals process in there as well. So I'll bring up proposal for a policy to Policy Subcommittee. Also make sure that our legal counsel has reviewed that when we have a chance to set up a meeting. There are also regulations, these have not landed yet, but they're currently being drafted and revised by the state legislature that would provide guidance and recommendations, as well as model policies to assist schools with policies regarding prohibition of the use of personal electronic devices or cell phones in schools. Some of the concerns that were raised by superintendents and school leaders when this was first introduced was simply logistical and making sure that this wasn't an unfunded mandate didn't require us to purchase things that we hadn't budgeted for necessarily. So where the Superintendent's Association is working with legislators on this, there are new solutions being piloted that do something like disable the apps on the phone without disabling emergency calls. And we're hoping to be included in any pilots that are no cost or extremely low cost, or at the very least, make sure that we're keeping up with this legislation so that our policies are aligned with it. I also included a couple of other legislative updates in your materials following a breakfast with Middlesex, the Middlesex County District Attorney's Office and superintendents and chiefs earlier this week, so you can take a look at those. A few hiring search enrollment and other updates. Mr. Gorski, we're going to miss you. His last day is tomorrow. We wish you the best of luck. And we are in the process of trying to find someone to replace Mr. Gorski. So two finalists will be interviewing next week with the School Committee Budget Subcommittee. We're nailing down the date now, as well as central office staff, members of the senior leadership team. Our finalists are going to complete tasks that are specific to the role and respond to some scenarios and questions from committee members and team members that they would potentially be supervising. And we also got some 10-year enrollment projections from Sanborn, which is the company that we contracted with to develop some projections. Those are not the projection graphs on the screen. But those folks have developed new projections that indicate stable enrollment in the short term, followed by some declines. Those are driven primarily by birth and replacement rates, as well as real estate development trends in the area. It's possible that we could integrate some GIS analysis to those projections. We would need to enter into an additional agreement with them in order to have them do that analysis. And as soon as we decide which direction we want to go, we'll do a public presentation with them and they can talk with you about what they've developed. The 2025, 26 enrollment sheet has been developed and the enrollments for this past week are in your materials. And the graphs on the right-hand side are just the trends over this past registration year. And finally, I want to talk about our new standard response protocol, which we rolled out, as I mentioned, on Opening Day with a large training in the gym for all staff. That, that training really focused on the five actions that are listed below. And these are actions that we would take in response to anything that required sort of an all-school response. So those could be emergencies or it could be not necessarily an emergency, but something where somebody's not feeling well and you want to make sure that they don't have an audience and they need a little bit of room, or if you need to do a hold for any reason, that wouldn't necessarily be an emergency, but it's something that requires sort of a full school response to something. There are five different actions and there, we went over each of them and what you should do in each scenario. I won't go over these in great detail now because we're going to have other opportunities for folks to learn about them. We do have posters displayed in classrooms and common areas that explain these five actions. We've provided communication templates to administrators, which they're going to use for quick notification of families. If any of these actions need to be taken, we've had a couple of holds already this year. That's fairly common in schools. We are doing follow-up meetings at the schools over the course of the fall to review and answer questions. We took questions from staff and we'll be developing an FAQ and sharing that with staff. And we're also going to make sure that our students know what these are so that they understand what the language is and that they get an opportunity to practice each of these actions in a way that is developmentally appropriate for them. We'll have a family forum about these new safety protocols on October 16th. That's a Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. Families can scan that QR code to register and we'll be sending out flyers and posting them on socials as well so that families can know what each of these five actions are, what it would look like in the event that we needed to use any of the protocols. One of the things that is really fantastic about this program is first that it is research-based and that these actions, when they are used, have demonstrated with a whole lot of data that people stay safe behind locked doors and that this shared language also makes it a lot easier for schools to communicate and for people to know what to do. And when you have clarity, then you have confidence and you have security and safety. And so it went over quite well, I think, on Opening Day. Staff were appreciative of the clarity and also of the specificity of what do I do when? We've also done a number of infrastructure improvements to support the rollout of this new approach. So we have made updates to our walkie-talkie system in the schools and we've used some of our capital funds for building security in order to do this. We have admin walkies, one to five of them per school. Obviously, the one that has, the school that has five of them is the high school because it's just so big. We'd need that many. Most of the schools have one, the elementary schools have one administrator walkie in the superintendent's office. Those walkies will transmit directly to dispatch. And they have an emergency button feature that allows us to sort of panic button to dispatch that there's an emergency. So they'll come straight to the school without us needing to talk into the walkie. And we, they also have the ability for all the schools to be reached by the district. So we could break into the channel and speak into the walkie and say, everybody turn your channel to the district channel and it will break through their school channel and they can turn it to a district channel so we could communicate across town if we needed to, if there was a town-wide situation and we had the schools in like a secure, for example. We are doing a classroom door lock audit. One of the things that the frameworks from I Love You Guys tell us is that all doors should be able to be quickly locked from inside the classroom. Not all of our buildings were built with classroom doors that have an indoor, inside lock. And in some schools, you have to go out into the hallway, lock the door, come back into the classroom if you have an unlocked door. So that's not super safe if you're in a situation where you need to be in lockdown. So we're auditing all of our doors that will require new fixtures and developing a plan to replace those with facilities support. While we do that, we've given magnetic strips and bumpers. Odison has bumpers because they don't have magnetic frames in their doors. But we're putting those magnets in and you just pull that magnet out. If you have the door already locked, it will automatically lock the door if you pull that magnet out from inside. So we're trying to create sort of workarounds where we need to and where we don't have locks like this one, because this is what you want to see and this is what the high school has. So we're really grateful for the partnership of the Arlington Police Department, as well as the Facilities Department, to get some of this stuff done so that we could tell staff that along with this new language, we have these things taken care of and you don't need to worry about them. And they fit with the protocol as it is articulated by the framework. This is our rollout timeline. We are working directly with the town because all other departments in the town are also going to use this approach. And so they were waiting for us, which is why we just went ahead and did it on Opening Day and had everybody there for it. So in September 25, we're going over these five actions. We'll move into building teams, so every building has a response team. Those are the people who have the walkie-talkies. They know that they're on the response team and that if we were to have an emergency, they would be the team that would debrief that with the principal and with the district team if the district team needed to be involved. In November, we'll be doing a little, we'll be doing some professional development with those building teams. So right now, buildings are getting those teams together. They're making sure that all the walkies work. They're letting us know if they need more magnets, et cetera. We'll do professional development in our November PD day just for those building-level teams to make sure they know what their responsibilities are. And then in the spring and into the fall of '26, we'll be doing the standard reunification method, which is also part of the I Love You Guys framework. This is what would happen in the event we had a major emergency and we needed families to reunite with their loved ones. There's a reunification process that makes sure that everyone is accounted for and that people are released in a controlled way. And it's part of the evacuation process should you be in a significant emergency and need to use it. So we'll be doing that piece of this over the next year or so. It's fairly involved. And there's a whole reunification team that's town-wide in the event that we would need to deploy that. And so I'm happy to provide more updates on this as we go. We had, no, that's my last update. This is the end of this update. We have had training with the administrators. We're looking forward to working with the school-based teams. And overall, I think it's going very well. It is active now. So if you get an alert from us that says we've had a hold, then it's because we're using this and it'll have the language for what a hold means. And we also have had all of the principals send out what each of the five actions is and sort of a brief description of what each of them means over the last couple of weeks or it's coming out by the end of the month. The directive was that it come out by the end of September. So if you don't see one from a school, let me know and I'll make sure that it comes out. But they do have another week or two to get that out.
Great, yes, Ms. Keys?
Just, I think you just clarified this at the end, but, um, so we're doing this.
We're doing this.
So the terminology rollout is a little confusing because it sounds like we're not doing it yet. So I'm just, just so that families know, like, we have implemented this new, the new protocol and it's, it's the more detailed training that, like, what, what does it mean? What is, like, what is going to happen in April, in fall of 2026 that isn't happening now? And tell me I shouldn't be concerned. That is not happening now.
So the reunification process, and when, when districts have taken on this protocol, it has taken a while. The reunification team development process and then training is pretty comprehensive. So now, say we had a lockdown now, we wouldn't do the reunification method because we don't have a reunification team set up and we haven't established the reunification site in town. And so we would do a con- And so we would do a controlled release in that case at the site if we were to have a lockdown, for example. We would use our standard evacuation sites now. Every school has an evacuation site. They would go to that evacuation site. So there are aspects of our, of our prior routines that are still active that wouldn't be as soon as we have the reunification method established. There are, we do have building response teams. So buildings know who their emergency response team is. We have not met with those, those response teams at the building level to talk with them about how this is different, answer any of their questions, do some more specific training about what do you do in this situation, in that situation? Who's your, what's your communication chain of command going to be? We haven't done that part yet. So there are pieces we haven't fully rolled out yet, the five actions, that is active now. But I can clarify that for families too because that can be confusing.
Mr. Schlickman and then Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thank you. Excuse me. Back on slide five, you have that color coded on the lower left-hand side. Now, I think I've seen people with something on their lanyards with this, so we're putting it out there pretty vigorously.
Yeah, it's, there's a little card you can put, Rob's got it, in your lanyard. So you have a quick reference. There's stickers. So I think IT doesn't want us to put them on their, our computers, but you can put it on your notebook. And we have the posters in the classroom. There are small ones for the classroom and then there are larger ones for common areas.
Okay. Thanks.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Couple things. First, is the family forum going to be recorded?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have any information on the website already about what this is?
I'm not sure, but we can get some information up on the website.
It seems like we could get, and just pull something from them and.
Definitely.
Yeah. And then finally, if I understood from what you were saying, I understand that we're not doing the standard reunification method now, but it sounds like you're saying one site. Now, I'm thinking about where all of our schools are and about Arlington and the fact that we don't have buses. And I don't understand how one site works.
It includes transportation. So in the event, the reunification piece of this, and I'm still learning myself, so I don't want to speak and say something wrong, but they're like, it is involved enough that like our buses would be involved to get people to the reunification site, where we would have additional mental health support and we would have nursing support or we would have emergency responders set up. So the, it would, it would cover that issue.
Okay. I understand that that's how they do it, but I'm also thinking about our kids who don't hardly ever ride the bus and just that that's, I'm just questioning that approach for our town. And that's all. I'm asking the question. I understand they've done lots of research, but the research, you know, there's not that many places that have walking schools, et cetera. So that's all.
I'm not sure if there can be two different sites either is possible, but we can ask APD about that. They're working with other communities in the area too who have used this so they can draw on some of the wisdom of folks who already have their reunification piece figured
So my question, I just think based on what Dr. Allison Ampe said, the reunification part isn't going to be part of the parent meeting on the 15th, correct?
We won't talk about that in much detail because that's a component we don't have.
I would recommend not talking about that part yet because that's the part where, yeah, you start putting the kids on buses and driving them around and that makes people nervous. But the rest of it, right now, sounds very well thought out, which is awesome. So, great. Any other questions, comments? Okay, great. The consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Warrant number 26010 dated 7/22/25 in the amount of $305,117.59. Warrant number 26021 dated 8/5/25 in the amount of $442,869.36. Warrant number 26036 dated August 19, 2025 in the amount of $509,379.32. Warrant number 26050 dated September 4, 2025 in the amount of $988,453.69. Donation check to the Welcome Center in the amount of $100 dated July 16, 2025. Arlington School Committee Special Meeting Minutes dated July 15, 2025.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Schlickman.
I'm requesting a removal from the consent agenda of warrant 26010 as unconflicted.
Okay, great. So.
And removal, and removal of the donation check because there's no documentation.
Okey-dokey. Great. So for the, so we have left on the consent agenda warrant 26021, 26036, 26050, and the Arlington School Committee Special Meeting Minutes. Hold on.
Let's just do this.
Hold on. Consent.
What do we think of consent?
We can do these and then we can, we're going to pull up the other, we're, we're, all he's doing is pulling those off the consent agenda. So we'll have the.
Hold on a second.
Great. So moved. Perfect. Okay. Great. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? None? Abstentions? None. Great. So now separately, taking warrant number 26021 dated August 5.
No, 26010.
Oh goodness. All right, sorry. Taking warrant number 26010 dated July 22, 2025 in the amount of $305,117.59. I am looking for a motion to approve. How moved? Motion by Ms. Exton, seconded by Dr. Allison Ampe. All in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Great. So six yeses, no no's, and one abstention. Okay. And then we have the donation check to the Welcome Center in the amount of $100. This was.
Move acceptance.
Second. Motion by Mr. Carden, seconded by Ms. Exton. All in favor? Would you like to discuss it? Yes.
The question is, who, what, when, why, how?
So the, a copy of the check is in Novus. I, my, I don't know why this came in. I, I do know that the Welcome Center solicits donations online for, they have like an Amazon And so I would, maybe somebody thought that they would send this in.
Who's the donor?
It is Carola and Marcelo Swar, I'm going to, Suarezur, Zarosco.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful. I'm glad there's Novus.
Yeah.
There wasn't any in Novus earlier, so.
Great.
I'm prepared for any affirmative.
Great. Anybody else? All in favor? Yes. Opposed? Abstentions? Great. That's a seven-nothing vote. Subcommittee liaison reports and announcements. Budget, Dr. Allison Ampe.
So we met on, on August 14th and we had updates on FY '25 and FY '26 and went over planning for both the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Search and also work prioritization preceding Mr. Gorski's unfortunate departure. We discussed this, but we discussed how this, the stuff that came to you now and before went forward and we discussed a little bit about long-range plan and that's about it. And we, we will have a meeting next Friday from 2-ish to 4-ish, which will, to see the presentations from the incoming candidates for the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations candidates. And everyone's welcome to attend, but we're going to want to give them a chance to talk.
Community relations, Ms. Gittleson.
We met last week and recommended the reappointment of Mr. Ikada for the Arts Commission. We are in the next week, next Wednesday evening, having an executive session, subcommittee meeting to interview candidates for the Arlington Human Rights Commission and expect to have recommendations for the full committee at the following meeting, whatever the next full committee meeting is.
Great. Thank you. Curriculum instruction assessment and accountability, Ms. Exton.
Thank you. We met in August to discuss the revised job descriptions for the Director of Excellence, Access and Opportunity and the Excellence, Access and Opportunity Specialist. And as an oversight, I should have brought it to this meeting, but we'll bring them for approval at the next meeting.
Great. Facilities, Mr. Thielman.
We met today to review the tech and space plan and the facilities plan and more work is being done on it. We meet again on October 1, I think, or what did we say, 3rd, 1st? I forgot now.
3rd.
3rd, October 3rd. For further discussion, we hope to bring it back to the school committee. To bring it, the school may review and approve sometime in October.
Great. Thank you. Policy and procedure, Mr. Schlickman.
Okay. Looks like we've got some new items on the agenda that we're going to have to meet pretty soon. Also, in the packet today, you'll see policy ECEV, which is our EV policy. Police have started to ticket people who are not parking legally in front of the chargers, but we need to make a couple of technical corrections for the police department. And those technical corrections are aligned with what the legislative intent was when we originally passed this policy. So they're included in the packet right now so that we can bring it forth for a first and possible second read at the next meeting without going through committee. Unless there's objections from other members of the committee, then we'll have a further look at it. But I think these are just technical corrections to be where we thought we were and to clarify our language.
And that's the report.
Great. Do you want to take up this, take up ECEV tonight?
No, I'm just, we're just putting it here to give notice that this is something I'll ask to put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Great.
And if I hear from nobody, we'll just put it on the main agenda for a first read and possibly go to second read because they are really just technical corrections.
Yep. Great. Arlington High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman.
So, you see outside, it's looking really good. The committee's charge, we're actually, he has to keep meeting throughout 2026 because there's a checklist and all sorts of different things to do. But there is a opening ceremony on Saturday, October 25th, and we hope to see you guys.
Great. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
And there will be an open house for the, the opening ceremony is a small invite-only But in the afternoon, there'll be an open house for the entire community and we're going to need volunteers. So that's the other ask we have for people if they can help out with that.
Great. Liaison reports, announcements, future agenda items. Ms. Exton?
At some point, I would love to hear more about Mr. McCarthy's adventures, sabbatical, deeper learning exploration that he did last spring.
Okay. Great. Anybody else? Super. Okay. The next item is nomination and election of Office of Chair, which I'm going to let Ms. Gittleson do. We were very lucky that Mr. Schlickman sent us a very kind order of operations, which arrived in my email hours before I would have thought how to do it myself. So I was very grateful and felt very held. So the first item I'm supposed to give Ms. Gittleson, the gavel, which she is well-positioned. Oh, she did. Perfect. And we will let her take us through the rest of these agenda items.
Okay. So I, I think I'm supposed to recognize you?
Sure. That would be great. So I am resigning as chair of the Arlington School Committee effective now. I, as many of you know, I work, my, my job that pays my mortgage and provides health insurance to my family is in higher education. Higher education is a very challenging place to be right now and I want to make sure that I am able to put my attentions there. And so I am stepping away from this role and I am confident that as a group, we will be able to find ourselves a new leader to take us through until early April. So thank you, Ms. Gittleson.
Recognizing Mr. Schlickman.
Madam Chair, I move, we accept the resignation of the chair and express the thanks of the committee for her service.
Second?
Second.
Second by this, Dr. Chris, Allison Ampe. Can I take a vote? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Abstaining? That is a seven-o vote. I'm going to recognize Mr. Schlickman again.
I nominate Mr. Thielman to be next chair of the Arlington School Committee.
Second.
Accepta? Is that what you're supposed to say?
No, you don't have to say anything.
I don't think you get anything in this at all.
Your motion's been seconded.
And I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? All abstaining? So that is a seven-o vote.
Madam Chair, I move adoption of the subcommittee assignments as amended.
Make it a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Exton. Add any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Abstaining? That is a seven-o vote. I think that now we are not going into executive session.
No, go ahead. Mr. Thielman.
Yes, absolutely. You're the chair.
I just want to thank Ms. Morgan for her tremendous service, dedication, devotion, hard work, many, many hours, taking phone calls nights and weekends, which I thought we weren't due, to the extent that Ms. Morgan has, but she has been a wonderful chair, always accessible, always available. And I'm personally very grateful for her service as chair and as a member.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? Abstentions? That is a seven-o vote.